A minute.
On the meeting to order at six seventy-two. First item of business is election of board chair. Do we have any nominations for? Board chair twenty-four, twenty-five. We do have to have a board chair now.
Do we not nominate?
No, you do.
Okay. Process already until.
Come on, wait a year, Sarah. Thank you. Any other nominations? Okay. We'll vote Rebecca.
What am I saying?
Yes. Even after the new.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Paulie.
Yes.
I vote yes. Thank you all. Appreciate. Appreciate the default vote. Okay.
My cookie.
Yeah. Sarah made the nomination.
Should be good.
Next item is election of vice chair. Do we have any nominations for the election of vice chair? And for clarity, we only need a nomination. It doesn't happen. Okay Rebecca. Any other nominations? Y'all are super busy, I know. Okay. Everybody's got so many responsibilities. Yeah. Okay. We'll vote Rebecca. Nancy.
Yes.
Sarah.
Yes.
Dawn.
Yes.
Polly. I vote yes.
Just a side note, I must say, no, we should probably next time ask.
Oh, yeah.
We forget.
Thank you, Paulie. First time will be telling Michael, yes.
Okay. Yeah, good, good point. Also, just, just so everyone knows, there is a, there is a ORS on the books that a board chair can only serve for four consecutive.
I thought that was that.
It's always been law.
Based on that one off for a year and because it's set up, so you could be off a year and be back.
Or you can be off for six months and the chair can say they don't want to be chairman, well, then the vice chair, which was the previous chair, could be chair again.
That's tricky.
You know.
Anyway, just wanted to make sure that. Next, we have accentuate the positive. Do we have anyone here to accentuate the positive?
I could just say that summer school, we're in the first week of summer school. This would be really awesome. Very, very exciting and great energy we have at the elementary level. Focus on literacy, which is new for us. And like, I haven't seen better instruction in classrooms since summer school. And it's with our students that need the most help in the meeting and it's been intense. So every Friday is fun Friday. So secondary is going to the theater and grants pass tomorrow. The elementary is different ones based on grade level, the Tinsel Town to Hawthorne Park, the splash pad, and then the SOU Garden. Garfield Park, the splash pad, and then another group to County or City. So that's going to be a lot of fun, too. And then next week, secondary goes to the fair and elementary will go to wildlife images. So, yeah, we have some. So we have our partners, Rogue Valley Farmer School and County or City with us and the Boys and Girls Club. So it's been great. And then this year, too, we're, we're doing an I ready summer challenge.
Oh, I wanted to ask.
Yeah, we have kids who've already hit it. So.
Really?
Yeah, Charlene went down today to buy the gift certificates for the pizzas and I was supposed to bring one in and I left it on my desk. She wanted me to show the certificates. So we're going to present them. Some of them are kids that are also doing summer school. So we'll present that. But we have a ton of kids that are actively looking on it. Well, that's excellent. We don't want them to do like spend all day online, obviously, but just ten minutes a day is what we recommend, ten fifteen minutes to get that math and reading. So we don't get that summer slide. There we see it. Yeah. Yeah. The, those students that were in kindergarten through eighth grade this four years. And then we also have our kindergarten going on at the new building, the new preschool building. And that's a full house and that's going through a great, too, that means it's got painted. It looks really nice in there. Yeah. So there's a lot of things happening right now. Super exciting. And we're all in Phoenix because of the seismic upgrades and talents. So it is. Phoenix Elementary is a busy place right now. So is the high school. It's good.
Thank you for that update. Remind me the dates of summer school. When, when did it start?
So it started this week and we go until August second. And this year it's Monday through Friday. In the past, it's been Monday through Thursday. And everybody's full day this year. In the past, we had part days.
Yeah, great.
It was. It was exciting to see on the way to work the school bus. And I thought, oh, transportation could be a barrier to participating. And so I really appreciated that as a district, we were able to provide transportation and five day and full day. And so the kids were all waiting to get the bus.
They all looked excited to be there. So.
Yeah, I mean, the energy is really positive. And the kids are excited to be there. We, I'm gonna knock on wood because we haven't had any, like, any real challenges. And it's been, like I said, the teaching's great. What happens when everybody's really engaged and we've, we've had a lot of fun.
Nice.
Yeah, every, all the early literacy kids get time in the garden every day. For our intermediate migrant education students, they're doing camp invention, which is a lot of fun. And so there's just some extra activities that they don't always get to do. So. But then really focus on literacy, too. Everybody's getting a couple hours of direct reading instruction. That's, that's huge.
I was gonna ask, is the number of students more than previous years or is it about the same?
It's more than the last few years when we haven't had the grants.
Okay.
Because in the last few years, we just did migrant education and then we did some recovery services for students on ATBs. But when we had the grants, it was.
Yeah, three years ago, maybe.
Three years ago. It was, it's about the same size. So we have about a hundred and fifty students at the elementary and a hundred, about a hundred and thirty of the secondary. So it's a pretty good size group. And I mean, I, well, I don't know how many get back now, but I was at the high school yesterday and so they had only been in credit retrieval for a few days. And they get credit in order increments. And I counted thirty-seven kids in there and they had already gotten four credits, like total as a. And then we're all really working really hard. This teacher, Nettie Charles, did a great job. And we had aides in there because they have to be a jack of all trades when it comes to subjects. I heard need help with environmental science, needs a model with English nine. And so, you know, they're they're running around. But it was, was really amazing to see how we were engaged there. So it's great. If you, if you had a chance, that's enough to stop by.
So the bus coming home to you, that's what it's nice when you live at the corner.
Yeah.
The bus coming back with kind of sleepy. So definitely smiling, but some like.
It's like some odd days and so like whatever fun they had had on the way back, it was so cute. If there was a bus full of staff members, we'd all be.
It will be interesting to see the data on summer school and the program, the I ready program that you're doing. Hopefully that'll be like this winter so that when we advocate for legislation, we can show the numbers of why we need summer programs. So thank you so much. And I know you love data, so I know that you have it already for me.
Well, remember, this is my doctoral dissertation in summer school. And so we have all the data. But so we're doing weekly data, which is good for us to do, too. So we can do, we can be really nimble and quick and tweaking individual student programs to make sure they get the help that they need. And then we'll be comparing. I mean, some, what we saw just had a month after some kind of school, because we took the data from spring, or as soon as coming to summer school, this was elementary. And we looked this week at what their data looks like just on Monday. And we've been about a month out. And the drop already is there with their, their reading ability. And so then to imagine three months could be pretty significant. So we're hoping to to, if, if we can't improve reading, at least freeze their skills where, where it's at. So they're not making up stuff for us. But that summer slide is really.
Yeah.
Really, it's real, especially for students that are English language learners, or students experiencing poverty and students in disabilities. So we can help.
I'm also hoping that the credit retrieval that happened at the high school will help with the graduation rates that was like right after school was out.
Oh.
I know that was going on.
So those students who, like, needed the credit to graduate, so they were seniors.
Or maybe underclassmen, too.
Yeah, they were. Well, we have a lot of underclassmen right now. The ones that needed to graduate quick, they had a session in June for those students. And we have three staff members working that, just so that they could get those credits needed to graduate. And they did. But there are some students that are recognized, they're pretty pumped about getting credit. And we've already had a couple freshmen from a little bit of time in June. Because also some kids are taking vacations, so we want to get those credit retrieval, that are already on track. After some time, some steps are still there is to get everybody those credits to stay on track. Number one was to graduate. And then look at those on track credits. We did have folks and kids that are drops that have come back in for summer to get some credits so they'll have more confidence how re-enroll in that school.
Great. One last question. I, there's been a lot of discussion about food availability and service and with things going on in talent, not as much access to food pantries there. I'm just curious if we're getting data or information about how the summer food program is going and for the schools that are those, the meal program is available for. Sorry.
Being at elementary, it's like, if you ever go at lunch.
Yeah.
It is crowded. You can see we have tables designated because we have summer school. So we have about a hundred and fifty kids there. The Boys and Girls Club around lunchtime seems to be about a hundred students as well. And then our kids and then the preschools and other. And when I looked at it, if I were to guess, I would say sixty to seventy kids from the community. So we go first with summer school, so we try to stagger them in.
Yeah.
But during that much time with those who are coming to summer school, Boys and Girls Club, and it's, it's a lot. So that's a community site here. I'm not sure how fortunate that was doing.
Yeah.
They have the YMCA out there.
Yeah.
But the high school is just closed to our high school students and are also providing food for our kindergarten. But they, that site, Phoenix Elementary. Well used.
Awesome. Thank you. Was a robust accentuate the positive. Thank you, everybody.
Can I add something?
Yeah, please.
Tiffany, when you ask her anything about data, she's the only person I know that is like, data. And like, in ten minutes, she has it. I don't know. It's like she just has it stored somewhere. She's waiting. She's like.
Everything, anybody might, everyone has.
But I, I appreciate it that she not only gets it to you, but it's time to matter. She's excited to give it to you. So. I very much so appreciate your earnestness.
Had a chance to, when I went up to the conference with you all in January, it was really cool. We were in a session about data and it was really cool to see Tiffany showing all the other school districts that access the data that she has. And yeah, we're, we're in good hands with Tiffany and, and rest of the staff as far as knowing where, where our students are and what their needs are. So yeah, good stuff. Thank you. Appreciate it. Next is citizens' comments. Do we have anybody? I don't see anybody online. Okay, nobody's online. Okay, we will move to the superintendent report.
Thank you, Chair Campbell. I just want to reiterate, thanks for Tiffany and Charlene and Maria and her team for, for summer school, just getting back today and just kind of seeing how things are going. It was, you know, leading up, it's very stressful with all the things that are, that are happening. But with such a robust summer school program, it has started really well. So thank you to you and your team. And, and there is a lot of excitement out there and and feel that with, you know, facilities and tech. Talking to Alan today and tech and he said, you know, it wasn't getting a lot of questions to start to, to lead up to summer school and started to make him nervous, but it was, things were smooth. I mean, things were taken care of. So that was great.
Do I think, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Summer school.
Thank you for that. We're open. We got some good news actually on the tennis courts this week. We're hoping to get in contract with the company that bid on it. Only one company bid, a knife river. But we, from the initial estimates and we, what we were gonna go with with buying them, which is a state contract, it's almost a million dollars less. Going out for bid and having John doing the project managing, which was, it was sticker shock a few months ago. And we made the decision to, to kind of revamp and draw out the bid and it's, it's paid off. So we're hoping to get that under contract. We may actually see if we could do a quick action item on the work session to start that. Or we can maybe do that in August. I'll have to see what John, we want to start that in the fall. So make sure it's ready for the spring.
Is, will that impact fall sports potentially with the practice?
It may. I think what we'll do when we have staging, we'll make sure things are set up to where we could actually still use that other field. But it may impact a little bit, but we'll try to reduce that impact as much as.
I just want, fall could be.
Yeah.
Towards the end, it could be, so I just.
And I think it is more towards the end, like later October, before the December, January, but hopefully hitting the timeline where we can start in March with tennis. And you may have heard, we talked a little bit about it, or I mentioned it to some people earlier. The power company has a new policy, I guess. I'm not sure if it's policy or mandate or where if something happens on a power line and they're not sure about it, they actually have to shut that power down and have somebody physically inspect that. So you'll see these rolling brownouts a little bit. And just, just to be aware of that, I, it's really impacting tech and facilities when those things go down. It, it actually, we believe, we found out, by the way, our AC is up and running in here and at the elementary school. We feel like some of those power outages are impacting those big units going on and off, which is kind of a pain, but we're, we're dealing with that. So we're all back up and running now. But we're just kind of being cognizant of how that may, may impact and just appreciate Alan and John and his team for getting on it when, checking things when those powers come back on. So.
So talent's really had quite a few of those outages.
Yeah.
Presented from talent.
They have a sensitivity in wildfire season because of the fire that we had. They installed like safety precautions that they it's like, it's like a fail safe.
Yeah.
If something happens, it just shuts the power down and they have to go investigate and inspect and then you know, both of them are.
And sometimes that takes, takes a while. That happened actually during the last month of school, too. And we were like, come on, school, come on, tower. But, you know, they, they've been on board. We have a kind of a direct contact with the power company and so can get some information on, and when things are down. It hasn't really impacted the, the projects over in county. But yeah, where, where things are going well there.
When are the backup batteries going to go?
So that, that's, we will be having design and, or a plan for that. That should be up and right by next summer, I'm hopeful. And next fire season. That will really take care of town.
Well, that's what I was.
And it, it'll just, we'll have to decide if that's common. And we do have a robust summer school here. We'll have to decide if we want to do some, some backup. It's really expensive. John's done that in the county and the health department and some other things he's built. But we'll have to see. At the high school, we, we actually have a space to plug in a big generator in case something happened. But to really retrofit those, we'll have to do it like the solar projects and that we're doing in town. But but it will be battery backup on those, which will be nice. Finally, in your packets, I was requested to have a, a little bit more of a a different version of financial report. So those are some options and we can get some feedback and share with Yasmin on how we want to present that financial statement. So, and I'll give it to Rick, too. I know he's not here, but we'll connect with him and see, see if it makes sense. That's all I have.
Questions for Brent? Right? Next is the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent?
This isn't one we have to read on.
No.
Yes. No.
No.
I agree.
Sorry.
I'm going to approve that consent agenda.
Thank you, Sarah.
One second.
Thank you, Sarah. Thank you, Polly. Any objections? You're none. The consent agenda is approved. These are the things we have to do.
I was like, this feels like the list that we usually read.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So the first. Yep. Okay, so the first item, I one is resolution twenty-four dash six superintendent signing authority for change orders. And just for clarity, we don't have to read the entire resolution, correct?
Not at all.
Okay. Am I on the right, am I on the right item?
Yeah, the. Action item.
Twenty-four, six.
We don't have to do all pages. Yeah, we don't have to, we don't have to.
I see it gives right place.
I'm going to adopt resolution twenty-four, six superintendent signing authority for change orders as presented. One second.
Thank you, Sarah. Thank you, Rebecca. Discussion. Okay, Rebecca?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Dawn?
Yes.
Polly?
Yes.
I vote yes. Next is twenty-four dash seven.
I'm going to adopt resolution twenty-four dash seven designation of the local contractor you board, LCRB for twenty-four, twenty-five as presented.
Second.
Polly and Dawn. Discussion. Rebecca?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Dawn?
Yes.
Polly?
Yes.
I vote yes. Free and reduced lunch.
I'm going to adopt resolution twenty-four eight free and reduced lunch as presented.
One second.
Thank you, Rebecca. Thank you, Nancy. Discussion. Just want to say how grateful I am that our district participates in the community provision. And this is specifically around free milk, but you know. Yes, this is a good thing for our community. Any other discussion? Okay, Rebecca?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Dawn?
Yes.
Polly?
Yes.
I vote yes. Next is board policy I G B A F A R. And this is, although it's an AR, we do have to approve it because it's special education.
I'm going to approve changes to board policy I G B A F dash A R special education, individualized education program as presented.
I'm second.
Thank you, Rebecca. Thank you, Dawn. Discussion. Yes. Nancy?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Dawn?
Yes.
Polly?
Yes.
I vote yes. Next, item I five, policy I G B A G, special education procedural safeguards.
I'm going to approve the changes of board policy I G B A J A G, special education project procedural safeguards as presented.
One second.
Thank you, Dawn. Thank you, Rebecca. Discussion.
Tiffany, how does this impact staff with the technical business timeline? Is this?
It's already our.
Rebecca?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Dawn?
Yes.
Polly?
Yes.
I vote yes. I six J B A A section five oh four.
I'm going to approve changes to board policy J B A A section five oh four students as presented.
Thank you, Polly. Thank you, Nancy. Discussion. Okay, Rebecca?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Dawn?
Yes.
Polly?
Yes.
I vote yes. J B A A A R section five oh four.
I'm going to approve changes to board policy J B A A dash A R section four students as presented.
One second.
Thank you, Nancy. Thank you, Rebecca. Discussion.
Not really discussion. Just want to thank not only Tiffany, a great head data, but she's incredible at overseeing of students for specialty. So I appreciate.
Rebecca?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Dawn?
Yes.
Polly?
Yes.
I vote yes. Next is SRO agreement for TMS.
I'm going to approve the SRO agreement for TMS as presented.
I said.
Thank you, Rebecca. Thank you, Polly. Just an update on this. We had some discussion about what we wanted in the SRO contract and specifically when it comes to training and equity. I had a discussion with Brent and I think I would say we had some good learning about timelines of when we do these agreements and when requests that we have to be put into agreement, when is a good time for those to. So I think next year, we'll probably be bringing these before you sooner. But given the timeframe, what we decided to do was put together a memo. And I don't know if you want to speak in greater detail to the, the memo and just some other.
Yeah, just try to capture kind of a discussion from last time and sharing our desire to, when we look at these again, to update them. And we've already looked at moving this on the timeline of the annual budget or a annual board agenda items. And both parties, you know, there's both cities know this. So and I'm sure they're willing, they're willing to get. And so we'll send this back with a signed agreement.
A lot of what I've learned through this process of looking into very good questions and suggestions that were discussed off time, there's a lot of trainings like what you requested that they already do. So brought some of that to light, but I agree, I think the strongest place is to have some of that in the agreement. But I do think, given the timeline of when, especially with Phoenix, if it already been before their council, the memo really emphasizes, I think, our desires and values and goals this year. And then you can definitely look at making sure to shore that up in the agreements next year. So that's where we're at.
I'm glad that we have a memo, especially as we're thinking about accountability. And sometimes, you know, some trainings are very like modules you can just click through. Do people really learn? And I'm hoping that it, that the trainings, the learning opportunities are more in depth because I think that they really make a big difference. And the that we interact with our students also through a lot of respect and dignity, but also I think it sets us up to be better stewards of how we're responsible for our youth and how we treat people with more information. And we are applying the adequate process to the behavior that it's happened. So I think this is important. And I think it's also really important to ensure that there's that accountability piece. Yes, if there is some trainings, what other trainings are there? The caliber of that training that it's happening because I think our students and our families are with them.
You're here.
And I might mention chief broker, especially with the transition, transition with SRO is really welcoming and, and wants like immediate feedback if things are, if, if we're not seeing some of the things that we expect in our district. So as far as working with kids and families of that nature. So same with Chief Stone. So.
I would say that this is good because it gives us some time to think about exactly what we want to ask to be of the city and of the police departments. To me, one of the biggest things we have the most control over is, hey, come to this training that we are. To me, one of the biggest things we have the most control over is hey, come to this training that we already do in our district, you know? Um, and I know, I think I've seen SROs at some of the various trainings that we we have, but um that to me seems like an obvious, you know, solution to.
We appreciate that we can also influence that training, right? Like, I think there's so many different relationships that are held between people within our community, within the school district, within police, and then, I mean, there's there's, they're so layered, but I think that we can champion that even if we haven't done it before, right? It holds us accountable to greater standards while also supporting and bringing along um other aspects or other sectors of our community to really be held accountable to a greater standard. Um, so, yeah, I I invite us to be really courageous and brave and need positive changes. Whether they've not been present or if they are, then how can we continue to augment and strengthen that sort of positive change?
Great. All right, any further discussion? So we're currently looking at the TMS. Talent Agreement.
I'm going to approve that SRO Agreement for TMS as presented.
I'm sorry, I think we are.
We're having a motion and a second, yeah. We just need to vote, sorry for the confusion. Um, and you already have, who did that, right? Okay, Rebecca.
Yeah.
Nancy?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Dawn?
Yes.
Polly?
Yes.
I vote yes. Nancy, would you like to move for the next?
I'm going to approve that SRO Agreement for PHI as presented.
Thank you, Nancy. Thank you, Rebecca. Any further discussion on this one? I just wanna um state for the record, just reiterate, I still feel like we could strengthen some things with how we support Orchard Hill um and I I do believe Brent's already had some of those discussions and we've reached out to Metford and um some of those things are in the works, but that's something that I'd like to see us explore a little more emphatically um in the future, so um anything else on Phoenix? Rebecca?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Dawn?
Yes.
Polly? I vote yes. Uh, we're scheduled to recess. You want?
No.
Getting this, okay.
And I just copied her, I'm like.
Going, okay, um. Um, facilities bond update.
It just said a couple things, I mean, we have a lot of projects going on and um John is just working and his team are just doing a bunch of things. We, we had some good news where we really started off really well at Talon Elementary and got um basically a week ahead of schedule. We had some things recently that put us back on normal schedule, but um it's good we got off to a good start because um we're still on a good timeline. And they dug in enough to where hopefully we don't have any other unforeseen stuff, but there were some amazing things that we needed to do, yeah, and so, uh but he's pretty confident we're we're past that and just some normal maybe change order stuff, but nothing big, so. Um, yeah, and town middle school's often rolling too, so really appreciate our partners and outlier and um just getting after it, so. Yeah. Yeah, they're gonna make a huge difference. It's amazing what it did over here, so.
That's it. Right. Any questions? Okay, legislative OSBA thing?
Well, should do legislative for sure. Anyways, OSBA, we had a board meeting today, I think you guys all got the email that we have decided to hire internally. Um, it's technical and complicated, but um we, we will be hiring internally, most likely there are some things going on, but if you, I think they're also gonna have input from different districts. I think she's amazing that the interim that we have now. I actually spoke up and said stability and that basically I put my foot down and said that I would not go out for a um and nationwide search unless they could guarantee me that we would vote in September for that interim because I felt like with legislative session coming up, with the um the road shows with um all of this stuff and and our current interim is on the several statewide committees that are making decisions first of the year, that unless we could guarantee that we, this new person, we would have them for all this important stuff, I was gonna vote no. Um, and then people are like, oh yeah, that's reasonable, so um I think it's a great decision, but if you guys don't that, then please let me know. Um, and we'll, we are gonna do some work and try to get to do it flawless and I think stability is important with Lori leaving, with Jim Green leaving, with Chris Davidson leaving, there needs to be some stability for employees and for districts and the knowledge. So um summer conference is coming up. I got an email today from Efron, Sarah and I are gonna work on a legislative update for our region, so please stay tuned to that. The state has an accountability committee with Emily Nischeck and F. Runner on, it's about with ODE, a sprint.
Yeah.
And so they had a survey, Brent can probably fill in the gaps. They had a survey about accountability, it was only open for a very short time. And um OSBA said, please, can you please reopen this so that we can have our members fill out the survey? So the survey is now open again. We will, Sarah and I will be sending out information about that so that you can have your you can answer the questions and and give some more information that might be relevant. Brent, do you wanna?
No, that that's about it. I mean, um there um there's gonna be a meeting next week that I can't attend in person, but um the first part really was just kinda setting up what accountability means, and it was kinda slow getting out of the gate, but now it's kinda the brass tacks of of what it could look like in Oregon, and this committee really just sets sent a recommendation to the legislature, so. Um, but yeah, and Coast is really involved in it. Um, and we have kind of a pre-meeting to kinda get ready for those meetings, but they're every two weeks for a couple hours, so.
Is the, can we see the report, was that June thirtieth or is it July thirtieth?
The what?
All the education commission, is there a report June thirtieth or July?
I don't know.
Where they give the number of when they
Yeah.
school is gonna really hit hot, so I think it's, it's either June thirtieth or July thirtieth.
I hear thirty.
I know, that's why I'm wondering, because it's July eleventh, and I can't remember, and I was. I will be seeing John Rexford in a week and a half, so, so, and he is on that.
He is chair.
Um, well, I think they redid chair. I don't know, he's still the chair, but he was the current chair and he has a plethora of knowledge and I will ask him for any information, so if you have any questions, please let me know.
Well, I'd like to find out if that report's available and I'm interested in because that's the recommendation to the legislature for where to start or to start adding the budget conversations for what that looks like.
I mean, just from my feelings from talking to some of the people, I think that committee feels unsupported and unheard, and um if you have a chance to meet anybody on that committee, it'd be nice to let them know that we feel that their work is important because they get a lot of pushback from people. And they feel unheard because they keep on putting out reports and no one really seems to listen to them. Yeah. So, um, and then they keep on getting pushed back saying, you know, well, we keep on giving you more money and they keep on saying like, yes, because cost of running a school are more, not because you're giving us more money, you're covering the costs, maybe covering the costs. Possibly in some districts, I don't even cut right the cost, so um I think, you know, backing them up will be very, very important.
Did you wanna say anything else?
No, that was. Oh, and then we, we may be looking for trying to spend some time at summer board conference to potentially come together as a region and and maybe have some conversations with anyone who is attending from the region. I don't know, Dawn's connecting with one another, see if there's possible time in the schedule.
Yeah, we talked about maybe having a regional meetup, I'm gonna pop someone now and see if, what the schedule is, and maybe there's an extra room. I think we pay for the rooms all day, and so um see if we can get something, if that's something of interest to everybody. It seems like our region really likes to meet up there. And so that's something that um I think would be helpful.
Yes, I don't remember the update, um the actual school district had asked if we wanted to get together and I'm
Oh, yeah, summer, I Yeah. I haven't heard anything about it.
Reached out. I haven't reached out yet, to be honest, so I'll, I'll try to follow, but then I, it was, I thought it was a little strange how the invite came in the first place, so um it's like through a person, through a person. So, honestly, it just fell off my radar, but.
Maybe good to reach out, regardless of what the process was.
And I think we'd have some questions to answer about what that means for public, how do you notice that and? Yeah, um, so, yeah, I'll look into that more.
Well, they wanted to do it separate, it was weird, the se- the separation part, I didn't really, wasn't fond of. I understand the corn part, but I think that you couldn't get a, get around that with some new legislation that passed and some help with um like Spencer at OSBA, I think you can get around that, because I've had conversations with him. But separating it, where like half the board goes one night and half the board goes the other night, I just feel that that's kind of like awkward because there might be conversations that for instance, Sarah might have with somebody, and then she assumed that I knew that same information and I wouldn't, and then I feel like the
So maybe an offer would be
or summer board conference would be an opportunity.
But they all, yeah, they.
Could you, could you connect with their news?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, maybe we can learn a little bit more about.
Yeah.
Eight to August that they are proposing.
Okay. I'll have, I can reach out.
Their agenda is.
Yeah.
Because their agenda was really vague and I
Yeah.
And, yeah.
Yep, okay. Oh, Brent.
Is the purpose for collaboration, what is the purpose?
Yeah, they said they wanted to have a meeting with us and it was like.
Everybody just wants to meet.
Yeah, it'd be nice to know what we're walking into, though, if it's something, we have the data, we can get a data from Tiffany or something.
If I want to meet with Phoenix Town School.
That's right.
Yeah.
Nice to know, like, there, there's lots of things running through my head, but I would like to show up with actually like no one, because I am a slow thinker, so. I don't even know what time it is, so. Yeah.
I love that your brain works that way.
My brain is off the charts lately, I'm just telling you, it's.
You and other officials, sorry, we'll leave that there, okay, um. Where are we? Thank you. Do we have an update in the committee?
I don't think the committee's meeting.
Okay, yeah, all right, um. Uh, annual report on restraint and seclusion. We kicking that straight to you, Tiffany, or are you gonna kick that out, Brent?
It's required, I'll kick it out.
School year was eight restraints. You will see there was one resulting in injury, it was a very minor injury, it was just a little scratch. It's all right, so um it's about typical of what we see in a school year.
That's, that's what I was gonna ask, how it compares, yeah, to previous years.
I'm, I'm just happy that we have this, um, that we have um things in place to keep this from happening, because in my work, I see this across the board at many districts, and it's not under control, and it's really scary what's happening. So.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
That's, so just so you know, all our staff that uh we don't do seclusions in our district, that's um our procedure. Um, and so staff that could potentially um be called in to uh put hands on a student or do restraint, we use it as last resort, but they're all, we're all trained. Um, so it's an eight-hour training for initial, and then it's half-day every other year, so we continue to be training. Uh, Mary Martina and I are the trainers in the Crisis Prevention Institute, and if we have teams, like special classroom teams, that need additional training to work together, we will go out there and do it with them to just um a lot of that piece, but a big part is that de-escalation piece, that what can we do before we get to a spot where we need to restrain a student, so all of the restraints that have been done in our district have been done by trained people, and the biggest training is keeping everybody safe, we don't
Yeah, the injuries.
Having the injury, and we do it as short as possible, so when we do do a, have to do restraint, the parents notified that day, and then within twenty-four hours, we have a debriefing meeting um that the parents invited to and all the staff and how we can keep this from happening. Um, so, we, we have procedures, all those forms come to me um right after the meeting, and then the principal and the staff member will call as well if the principal's not there, so. We, we have lots of uh strategies that we use to, to try not to have to do restraint, because it creates trauma on the student and the staff that has to do it as well.
And I think Tiffany's mentioned this before, but typically the number of incidents matches the number of students, so we're not restraining the same student multiple, multiple times, which is again, pretty traumatizing event, so.
And you can see, so we had a restraints of six students, so two students were restrained um twice. And sometimes it just takes us a little longer to figure out what this, those triggers are, or how we can de-escalate those students, especially um students that aren't yet verbal or are pretty young and into the school systems. So we will only do it if the student is causing harm, physical harm, or the threat is in, that they'll be physical harm to themselves or to another person.
And I think, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think part of the reason also is that we really pride ourselves on having a robust IEP and having good input on IEP and the teachers um reading and being informed, because I think again, having discussions prior of what needs a child needs and what tools help them and a teacher learning about them, I know in my experience goes beyond that because it's so robust and it's, some schools, I don't think, have such a robust IEP. Um, and so I really wanna thank all the staff that spend the time um to make those IEPs very useful for the students so that we can prevent these kinds of things.
Let me shout out to our schools and colleges, they're involved, they're making sure that our behavior plans and our safety and prevention plans are up to date, so.
Very good. Thank you. Um, next is annual agenda items, um. I had a couple thoughts that, as you, so just to review, this is just the, this is all the official things that we do throughout the year and the timeline of such. Any questions or comments on these things?
Yeah, that is confession, I haven't looked at this deeply, but does this reflect the contracts for next year?
And also the student representation, I was just gonna say, yeah, what else? Isn't September? Under September? The second to
Oh, yeah.
Do you, I mean, I mean, you wanna change it for? Sorry, I think that's one of the things we're gonna talk about potentially at the summer board retreat, so I think maybe some of some of looking at this could potentially come out of our conversations during the summer.
This is definitely a fluid document, not.
Yeah, that's why we're bringing it up now, so, and.
So you read it now.
Some of.
Yeah.
Summer board retreat topics, it's next, too, I think we'll probably.
Now that Rick is wanting to add it, um some sort of safety report and like by monthly or something like that.
Just kinda thinking about that on the SRO contracts, too, is it, or at least annually having the SROs kinda share um on something.
Good idea.
Uh, did we talk about moving Jab in November?
We did.
Okay.
That was one of my notes.
Okay.
Yeah, we, we talked about having that, I think, in January.
In January, yeah.
Um, you know, maybe this would be, actually, maybe we should bring this back in our work session.
That's, okay.
Dive in two more, yeah, let's do that, Denise.
On here, well, Brent, we're doing the evaluate.
I have, so my two, because now, remember, our new process is quarterly, right? So there's a quarterly check-in, so we need to figure out how we build that into the schedule. Um, yeah, I remember board self-evaluation. Um, which maybe will be more appropriate to talk about in the next item, but um I definitely have some questions and thoughts about how we proceed with that.
And I just wanted to say, Denise, that we're so grateful for you. You track so much and we know things and thank you, thank you for those.
Without her, there would be no continuity in life.
I think that's why she brought this in for us, so.
She's trying to help us, but.
Tough ass. Then dealing with all the people who wanna meet with us on top of everything.
So, yeah, I think that the, you know, look at.
Yeah, let's take a greater, cuz we really should, and maybe it's a good time to just move to the next item, um. So, um, we do have, if you look at, and I feel like there's some things missing, um, but, um. We have the board's self-evaluation on there. I don't know if we could get, um, Kristen and that quick a turnaround, but my suggestion would be, since we're embarking upon these two. Um. Familiar processes, but new ways of doing them, um, we should get some, I think we even agreed when we adopted them that we were gonna get OSBA's help to guide us through that. Um, so I don't know if that's possible to throw together in two weeks, um, but perhaps what we could do is just. Maybe, um, have somebody from the board development team there to just walk us through. What, what is the timeframe was what like to do that? Only, I don't think we could do those, all of that.
Last time that she actually had the workshop.
Right.
Which I can go back and do that with her.
Yeah.
I guess my question is, is, is that something you wanna do during the work session? Do we wanna do a, I mean, I think she recommended a separate standalone.
Correct.
Day and time for that.
Yeah.
It's gonna be a while.
Yeah.
It's gonna, um. Take several.
So like before the August meeting or something like that, or a separate?
Um, I mean, it could be, we only have one meeting in August and that's kind of what we were gonna discuss as well.
Yeah.
We could add a second meeting and call that this evaluation.
What? Cause we all recall from, from different things. It, it's like a two to two and a half hour discussion and it gets pretty in-depth and it might be, if you have it before a meeting, it might make some people, me, myself. A little brain dead where I might not be able to concentrate the entire meeting afterwards, but I could do it.
Okay.
Um. Yeah, and, and we, we did approve the new superintendent eval process, but I think there was some desire to really look at this criteria again, so we need to. We need to build in time to do that, too.
So when are, when is the timeline for us to have the self-evaluation completed?
It's on our own timeline. I think that's what we need to discuss and figure out.
As well, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, so the, if, so is this a larger conversation that can happen during the board retreat versus now about?
Yeah, my suggestion would be, maybe could we have Kristen join us just as a refresher on next steps? So what does it look like, Kristen, for next steps to get your support or your department's support with the superintendent eval? And with the board's self-evaluation and just sort of work through some of those. Details and timelines, but not actually do the actual evaluations and things themselves, but use this. Twenty-fifth meeting as a, as a way to sort of plan for it, if that makes sense.
So because it's summer, is, is that something she could just provide for us versus having to have her sit in?
Yeah.
Or someone asked this question of her and she said, just like Denise, which was saying, I think she talked about next steps to us.
She did.
She didn't even provide the documents.
Maybe we could go back and review those.
Yeah, yeah, I'm pretty sure.
Um, yeah, so, so whether it's having her or just refreshing our memory on that meeting we had with her about. Uh, just figuring out, how do we want this? And I think it's only fair to, Brent, also, that we. Get, you know, if there, if there's gonna be any changes to the adopted criteria, that we get that done ASAP, uh, before the school year starts too, uh. So, or at least as close to the start of the year as possible, so.
So maybe that number two says board slash superintendent's evaluation or something.
Um, yeah, um, we could call it, uh. Yeah, plan. Slash timing. I'm sorry.
It's looking, I'm confused.
So. On K, on K six. Just do board slash superintendent. Evaluation, planning.
You're, are you looking at the draft agenda?
Yes.
Okay.
No, well, we're looking at item K six.
And it's C on the draft agenda.
Talking about.
Well, K six says discuss summer board retreat topic.
Right.
I'm looking at, sorry, in the description you had some.
I see what you're saying.
Yeah, some numbers. Yeah, you're actually looking at the agenda, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Item C, yeah. Board superintendent evaluation planning would be a good. And then we've added a discussion about our annual agenda items. Um. With the, um. Discussing Culver Road and all the various stakeholders. I guess my concern there is, there's a lot of stakeholders there and. Do we remember how this item got on this and what we hope to accomplish at the.
I, I think, yeah, I think thinking about it is what, uh, really discussing what the board would like to see from stakeholders, if they want a proposal, if they want.
Okay.
If they want, like, what are the next steps, you know, as far as what we do, um, with ODP and Little League, uh, we're working with Boys and Girls Club right now to do. Um, so have some documents which we may have by then to review, um, as far as what that means for them and their property and their proposal, um, and so really talking about what. Uh, I, I think something that would be good coming out of that retreat is, is really clarity on what we'd ask. ODP to say, hey, this is what we would like you to do and for us to consider something at Culver Field.
Okay.
So.
Sounds good. I, I would, I think that sounds like a good idea. I just don't want the impression to be for any of these stakeholders that we're having a meeting and.
Yeah.
Discuss their future or anything like that, so.
Okay, kind of a next steps as well, yeah.
This is what you need to.
Yeah, ma- and maybe you could proactively reach out to them, just so there, there's clarity on what we're discussing or what, and what we're not.
I, is this really something where we're ready to invite them to that conversation? I feel like this is our, a, a conversation, so I.
Just so they know they see it on the agenda.
I would even hesitate to, and. Because we don't even know yet. It is a public agenda and I'm not trying to be secretive by any stretch, but I'd like for us. To really have that conversation before we start, um.
Sure.
Looking for input or, or.
Yeah, I'm not talking about inviting them to participate.
But if Brent's reaching out to talk to them about what next steps prior to that, that's my hesitation.
Yeah.
Has anyone that worded differently?
As I would think I would ask Brent. To wait until after we have the July twenty-fifth meeting with maybe some understanding about how the board.
Mm-hmm.
Would like to be moving forward for next steps before we reach out to the community partners with suggestions on what the next steps are going to be.
Like, here is.
Here is what.
Yeah.
And then we reach out versus.
I don't think we're gonna be even making any decisions at this meeting about that in particular. I think we'll have discussions, but. Correct?
Yeah, and then I think we can, you know, if, if there is any action that the board needs to take, but I think we can, I think clarity will be the big thing with our partners to say, hey, this is moving forward. This is what we would like to see and this is what we're kinda thinking about, any development on this property that we would need from our partners.
Okay, so we're really talking about Culver Road. The, the project as a whole. Is really the goal, okay.
And at least that is discussed, Culver Road project.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's really, yeah, it's, we're really talking about.
I guess I wanna just. ODP. Is not in the same community partner. Classification as Little League and Boys and Girls Club. Thanks, I guess I. I wanna be careful in how we're verbalizing. Community partners.
Right.
As definition in these conversations.
Right, right. Yeah, that's good clarity, Sarah, for sure. Because. Dawn, go ahead, sorry.
I was gonna say, I do have, I am kind of the opposite of Sarah. I really wanna make sure that we're transparent. Um, and I, I agree with you that it, community partners is different, but I also wanna be transparent, so if someone picks up. The agenda, they don't think that, oh, we're being secretive and now we've gotta get, you know, eight hundred people there and, and so I think that. Um, for me, uh, some kind of connect, just letting them know, we're starting to tou- we're starting to discuss. This in our session to kind of, we're just planning steps, um, and then we look forward to, um, discussing with them in September or whatever.
The board needs time to really, the board really hasn't had that time to discuss on what, when, how to proceed.
Yeah.
On the next step, so, yeah.
And then second, I vaguely remember this and it could be a dream, uh, that we were also gonna discuss, like, the timelines of different things of, you know, uh. Turf and bathrooms and other facilities on the property as well. Um, I think that's kind of an important thing to talk about.
Beijing you're talking about.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
It was.
So, just Destiny Culver Road property, I think is a little bit more appropriate as far as what type of discussions will be.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that's good.
I know, right?
Cause that was their work in our magic.
Um, okay, and. Not trying to add to the meeting, but was there anything missing? I wanna make sure we got everything that had been.
Were you talking about, um, also, um, student representative, the timeline for student representative, um, election?
Yes, let's add that to, that's probably what I'm forgetting.
What time did you wanna start this meeting?
Uh, eight AM. Um, no, no, seriously, uh.
Yeah, I, we could do a typical five fifteen dinner.
Uh-huh.
And start it. By forty-five or six.
Yeah.
What day are we doing it on?
Because in the past, we have done longer meetings for this, like.
Get a good. Five, start at five thirty or five fifteen.
We have a tall order right now at five, is what's on the agenda, the draft agenda. But.
So dinner four thirty.
Whatever you guys want.
What's your schedule, Rebecca?
For Thursday, um, I'm off at two, so.
I'm off at three thirty.
Four thirty, okay?
Four, four thirty, so I just wanted to check with work schedules and what's your.
Are you okay?
I.
Are you gonna be able to attend?
I don't know, I don't, I think so.
Okay.
So four thirty meal, five o'clock, meeting?
I'm sorry?
Four thirty meal, five o'clock meeting or?
Hmm.
Okay.
That sounds, I think.
So we already have schedule.
Scott.
Just maybe give me a party.
Denise, could you send, uh, Dawn two calendar in my. To be fair, I think that's the first time that's happened, my four years serving with you, so.
That there was, you were calling, we're all.
Okay. And then we might need, um, second dinner and, yeah, the coffee break too at some point for that meeting. Uh, okay, very good.
Can I just say one more thing?
Yes, please.
Really hate that we call it a board retreat.
Yeah.
First year I heard we were having a retreat and then I found it was a meeting.
It's absurd.
Showing up with a robe. And one of those little heels that.
Meeting at a disparate office.
Yeah, yeah.
You call it a summer board planning session?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's not a retreat.
Our administration feels your pain, but you, the admin retreat at Phoenix Town Council.
I just bring that.
There's your one.
Retreat.
Even at the admin retreat, like, like, I can't lie, it's there, and that's tradition, but, yeah, I agree, it's, it, it, it creates a.
Expectation level of something, well.
It's like the community feedback, but it's always like, the board is going and having this fancy retreat.
Retreat, yeah.
Watching stuff, like, no.
Cool, just blitz.
It's the one meeting a year we get a meal.
Or change the name. Right now.
In all fairness.
Effective immediately.
The Towne City Council had a board retreat at like the city hall once and it wasn't a retreat at all.
Yeah.
And, uh, it, like, we got lunch, I don't know, I ended up going into labor, but. It was not a fun day.
Yeah, they sent me home.
It was like an amazing day.
Well, no, I had the baby later. It was a long labor, like. But the lady next to me said, your contractions are nine minutes apart. You think you should go home? I said, well, thank you for tagging them for me. So anyways, it's a tradition in public services retreat, but I don't know why we did that.
Yeah. Fair enough, um.
Fair enough.
K eight already, Rebecca.
Yeah, no. Yeah.
You add, you added student reps to that, yes, student reps.
Oh, gosh.
The dates and times.
We already did that.
Yeah, dates and times were good, it's the same, so, yeah, moving on to K eight, um.
But we did need, um, student rep.
Oh, yeah.
Added to our many other topics.
Yeah, yeah.
We have that in our discussion, I'll add it.
Okay, great. Um, okay, uh, next is, we have some policies, um. Any questions on GCDA? GDDA, Criminal Records Checks and Fingerprints? This looks more of a funtery, it's limiting AR, yeah. Um, JEA, compulsory attendance. Citations are no longer issued. Uh, JAR. Go back and back bracket, that's not.
Um, it's proposed, so it will, yes, we have to vote on AR, yeah.
Can, so, yeah, take a look at that, um. J, K ten, JEAR, um. Do you wanna speak to this at all, Brent, or are you in a position to do so?
I love this letter, but.
Uh, the criminal records checking finger.
Oh, no, I'm sorry, we're on, we're on, sorry, K ten.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
We're on, uh.
Which one? No problem.
Yeah. JEAR, compulsory attendance, uh, there's a note in here about. ESC, this is responsible for tracking. If the district will be responsible for tracking homeschool students, the district may choose to add bracketed language regarding their actions concerning citations.
Yeah, and we're suggesting not, that would be a nightmare to try to.
Yeah, okay, got it, okay, got it.
Just saying.
But thank you for that clarity. Okay, um. Corporal punishment.
Read about the letter.
Which letter?
The dear parent regarding the end, your kid was absent, blah, 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 regular attendance at a public school.
If there's, I don't know.
We changed the letter, I'm just gonna, sorry, I'm just speaking out, um, we changed the letter a few years ago because we had parents that didn't like the wording and it was, and our, and. The board discussed and I think Brent said, you know, our intention is never to shame a parent and is never to, um. To fit, make them feel less than, our intention is always to support them and trying to come up with solutions to get our students. And I think we do a great job, except this letter does not reflect all the great things we're doing to improve attendance. And I would really. I would really be not serving to send this letter to a family that's really struggling and we've had, you know, teachers and principals reach out and they're building this relationship. And we've had, you know, teachers and principals reach out and they're building this relationship, but all of a sudden they get this letter in the mail. And now we're back steps of all this time that we've tried to build relationships, so that's my, my concern on this letter.
Um well, you can also choose to not include the letter in the board policy and we can just write our own.
Well, I think we, we have our own letter.
Have your own letter anyway.
Right, so we use.
So delete letter.
Are we talking about the irregular attendance letter or?
JEAR compulsory attendance.
Yeah, there's two different letters and one is just um.
One is related to non-enrollment.
No, I'm talking about.
And we can use what we've been using.
This right here, they're talking about.
This is just part of the.
Clarification, not using both letters, is that correct?
No.
Or just the one for non-enrollment? Sorry, I'm confused.
Which one? Practice, I guess.
So we have different letters, so we have a first one, which we call our nudge letter.
Okay.
And it's located in the dashboard. And what that does, it says how many days absent the child that the. The child has been compared with their peers, cuz we found our parents. And our family wanna know, is this a lot? Is there not that much? And we print those during conferences as well, so we call that the nudge letter.
Okay.
Um just some data, uh so it's that child compared to the school compared to the district. So it does a little draft there and it's very, like the word, I could. Show you, but it's, it's basically it's just giving that information and encourages school attendance for everybody. And then we have the seven day le- letter and then it goes a little more, but we don't. Even suggest like OARs and OISs until we get down a little bit, um but even still without. The, the letters used to work about citations and such, which we don't do anymore, and so um. There's, there's different letters for different schools and a lot of the principal will also personalize letters as well.
Can I ask you all to just take another look at this? Did you all review that, have an opportunity to review this? Because I'm not sure based on what you just said. That this proposed AR matches our current practice. Right, this is a new AR, right?
It is.
Do we wanna?
Proposed, so.
Do we wanna have them review that and see if we even. Want to adopt this or, um I mean, I think.
Certainly do that.
I think given um. I think we need to be doing something for attendance, you know, uh so, but. So maybe you guys can take some time to review that and let us know if you, if you need more time, I think that's fine, we have time. Um yeah, we have. So, yeah, um but yeah, we want our, we want the notices to reflect our values and our culture too, so. Good catch.
Sarah.
Sarah, good job.
Have an AR for that policy.
Okay.
From a person who has made these phone calls and sent these letters, this was my role.
Yeah.
Metford's listener. And I learned from this district. How to communicate with those families and this is not reflective of how I was taught to.
Yeah.
By example of how to interact with families um who are struggling to have.
Yeah.
Getting their children to school.
And I really feel like our role as far as the board's concerned with policy and with ARs and things like that would be more broad. So we say, we want. Our policy and AR should say, we wanna make, we wanna be sending, we wanna be communicating with fam- with families. With students who aren't regularly attending school. Yeah, that's it. And then, you know, because different schools might have, you know. Their preferred method, but as long as something's happening and it's happening.
Well, it has to happen legally.
Correct.
Required legally to do it, so it's.
Absolutely, but I mean, we don't have this AR currently, so we can either look at really reflecting it as AR or just leave it off and do what we've been doing.
Uh as long as, we just need to make sure that we're in compliance with whatever, absolutely.
Oh, yeah, no, we totally are, definitely by this policy.
Well, I'm saying, if there are any ORSs that say we're required to send a letter at certain number of offices or whatever, we wanna make sure we're.
That's already.
Okay. Okay, good stuff, thank you all. Um K eleven, JGA corporate punishment.
Scarlett wrote this when I was, she was like, they used to do that. Lucky.
Yeah.
I love that your kid is reading board posts.
That's fantastic.
Like to know what's going on.
Unless your child's like Aiden and then reads the board policy and bang, they'll loophole.
Okay, any questions on that one? Basically, yeah, we don't do corporal punishment. Um K twelve, at least at the school. JGAB, use of restraint or suppression. Any questions or comments on this? Tiffany, you have a, anything you wanna?
Just something on AR.
Okay, uh go ahead, let's go, let's talk about the AR. Anything you wanna point out there?
Uh yeah, I emailed, um see if I gotta write, I think it's on the third page. Um down below, if serious bodily injury or death of a student occurs. It's the notification and then it's nine, I think nine should be B of that, and then we also notify. Uh written incident to Department of Human Health Services. But it seems like if nine is by itself, that we do that for every restraint incident, so maybe we do that if a serious injury occurs. Does that make sense? So you're like nine should be a B for lower use fee.
Okay.
And be indented.
And did you say that you contacted the policy department to ask them or?
No, I just noticed it tonight.
In the event that happens, I'm glad we have this, so we need to notify the parent. Okay, um did that make sense to you? Great.
And just to say that, that um I've seen cases where the, where it is not notified. In twenty four hours, it's notified in like three weeks.
Oh my gosh.
So thank you. Well.
Yeah. Yeah, unfortunately you have to, yeah. Okay, anything else on that? Um okay, and then review of next meeting agenda, we've already discussed that. And I think you're confident Denise has all of our notes. Thank you Denise.
Um so Denise, are you gonna update the draft agenda with? Yes, you're gonna update.
Oh, yeah.
Lastly, before we part.
She's been typing other things.
Just a reminder, we all have that training we have to do.
Way past due if you haven't done it yet.
Oh, I think it's due the.
Like, and I didn't mind after that.
I thought we had all this time, so it's not.
Mine says it was, it's due this Wednesday, the seventeen.
My, oh, I was planning.
Yeah, mine said you were late and I did mine.
When I did mine a month ago, it said I was past due by like three months. I'm like. Past due by three months.
Oh, that was a glitch in the system because mine showed I was a year overdue.
Okay.
And so it was a glitch in the.
You're gonna go, listen, I have the special name tag. So try to get done by Wednesday, the seventeen. Guys, just, just a reminder, thank you. That's what we call it, callback.